All right, I'm gonna call this April 1st, uh, meeting in the Mounary Town Council to order. I'll start with the pledge. Oh, I'm sorry, guys. I've got some scouts here from Trooper 460 to actually lead us in the pledge. Go ahead, guys. What was yours?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. It's not written on my agenda. I don't get it. All right, up first we've got a presentation. Mr. Mayor?
Corporal, will you be accepting this on behalf of, uh...
Yes, Trooper Roger Shore.
The town of Mounary presents this certificate of congratulation to Trooper Roger Sworbe.
Correct.
Thank you. The Mounary mayor and town council congratulate Trooper Roger Sworbe on receiving the Trooper of the Year Award for 2012 from the Westminster Barracks. This award is a high honor and it validates the quality of service that the town of Mounary provides our residents. This is on behalf of Trooper Shore.
Thank you.
Thank you. Round of applause for him. Do you like to say a few words about the, about the award?
Unfortunately, Trooper Shore couldn't be here tonight. He's out of town with some family issues. However, he is honored and privileged for this award. The Trooper of the Year is a, uh, is a great accomplishment, especially in this county because it's such a hard, hard thing to attain, um, with the competition at the barrack. And him being down here, it makes it even more difficult because as far as the county is concerned, in Leece and Carroll, Mounary is still the, still full service with the state troopers, uh, as far as arrests has been taken over by the sheriff's department. So for him, this is an honor and he's very happy. And like the mayor said, it does show what kind of service this town does get. You guys have the best of the best working down here for you and, uh, he is proud of it. And, um, I'll be happy to give this to him when he returns.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank him for us, please. Next up, I think Victoria Lintecum's going to read an essay for us.
If I could, just by way of introduction, Victoria, you were the, uh, number one winner in the VFW Essay Award. Is that correct? You did a fantastic job. I was at that ceremony. I was so impressed. That's why I've asked you to come here and read it again today. So without further ado.
The relevancy of the U.S. Constitution, America's Contract and Creed. What is the only thing that guarantees America's freedoms and protects its citizens from tyranny and oppression? The American Constitution is this guarantee and it is by far the most crucial document in this nation's history. To keep America strong and to continue moving forward, its citizens must know what their Constitution truly is and what it means. Without the Constitution and its basic principles of God-given rights, America has no structure or morality. The Constitution is as relevant today as it ever was because it outlines the very foundation of everything America stands for. The Constitution is America's law. Shortly after winning Freedom for America in the Revolutionary War, a group of noble and intelligent individuals gathered to discuss what their nation would be and what its law would uphold. They did not write the Constitution based upon whims or concepts that were subjective and debatable. It was written with careful scrutiny and founded in a common ideal. They knew even then, the document was just, was not just a simple piece of paper, but rather an oath and contract that represents America's beliefs. To agree upon common law, a group must also agree upon the objective basis of that law. Therefore, they must agree upon the very concept driving their ideas of right and wrong. The Constitution is America's belief system. It is the document that sets in place the freedoms, rights, and laws bound to every citizen as well as to the government itself. The founding fathers decreed these things based on the common idea that every person has unalienable, God-given rights and that any ruling body must consistently recognize and respect these rights. Without the Constitution, there is no foundation for America's liberties and no limit on the American government. Furthermore, many nations do not have the privilege of their own constitutions. Their governments do not have any standards to follow. Because of this, they may violate their people's liberties as they please, for no one and nothing can tell them otherwise. Other nations, hoping to avoid tyranny, have also written their own constitutions. But these documents had no true basis for the decrees and are thus easily subjected to change according to the desires of their current rulers. These governments also made the fatal error of separating their liberties from the God who gives them. This is what distinguishes the American Constitution from any other. It recognizes that there can be no freedom apart from God. Though Americans have such a marvelous Constitution, the document alone cannot defend itself against government or outside powers. Its citizens must stand behind it and defend it. When Americans are sent to foreign lands in times of war, it is often said that they are defending their nation's freedoms. But pretty phrases and noble sentiments mean nothing unless America knows its own freedoms. Essentially, when citizens go to war, they are fighting to defend the Constitution, the American belief system that it reinforces. For this reason, they continue to love and respect the Constitution even long after the war is over. In order for ordinary citizens to defend the Constitution, they must know what it says, what it means, and why it was written. They must ultimately understand its foundation, know why our soldiers have fought and died for it, and be able to recognize anything that threatens it. For freedoms are not taken away in broad and purposeful swoops, but in small and often well-intentioned maneuvers. The Constitution, the proof of every American's God-given rights, is perhaps more relevant today than ever before, yet it now faces many potential threats. Our current government is slowly taking God out of our society in a misguided attempt to move the nation forward. Did not realize the dangers of doing so and these harmful actions will only continue unless the American people stand together against this wrongful reform. As America's only foundation and the concrete principles of God, the Constitution must be protected at all costs. It is time for America and her people to take action.
Victoria, what's your school and grade?
Uh, Mounary Christian Academy, 12th grade.
Okay. Great job.
That was Mounary Christian Academy, what grade?
12.
12. They don't always pick it up unless you're on the mic. Don't forget to grab a copy of the agenda when you leave because your name is on it.
Yeah, this, this is available from the Carroll Media Center. It's either streamable and you can probably, might even be able to get a download of it. So if you ever want to keep it, they're shooting you on the cameras. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, up next we have approval of the council meeting minutes for March 4. And the closed meeting minutes. I made one small change, Debbie. Did that get around?
It did.
Okay, it was just a small typo.
Yeah, it should've been capital.
Okay. That was one small typo. And that's, the new ones that have been distributed have that changed?
Yeah.
Okay. Then I will...
Make a motion.
Bob's moving. We approve them. Both sets?
Both sets.
All right. We have a second. A second from Scott. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Police report.
Good evening, Corporal Winawski. Month of March, 2013. Resident troopers in Mounary investigated seven traffic accidents and four of those were charged on traffic citations. The total amount of citations issued for the month of March were, were a hundred and seven. Traffic warnings issued were 174 and 57 safety equipment repair orders. We made nine criminal adult arrests last month. One of them was a drug arrest. We took four incident reports and five DUI arrests. A few notables, on March 14th at 8:35, Trooper First Class Sworbe responded to the 200 block of East Ridgeville Boulevard in reference to a theft. And this investigation revealed that the suspect paid for the merchandise with a counterfeit $100 bill. The bill actually passed a marker test. However, when he brought it to the bank, the bank confirmed that it was counterfeit and were required to make contact with the Secret Service when this happens. And Secret Service was familiar with the numbers on the bill and had a suspect linked to it who was apparently doing this in several areas in the proximity. So we have a suspect and charges against the suspect are pending. On March 19th at 5:30 in the morning, and I'm sure you guys are aware of this, Trooper Fike responded to Twin Ridge Development in reference to thefts from vehicles. He made contact with several witnesses who advised that loose change was stolen from their unlocked vehicles. Trooper Fike, myself, Trooper Bowen are able to coordinate with the Frederick County Sheriff's Department. We developed the suspect. Were about a total between the two of us of 100 victims. All who left their vehicles unlocked, had loose change stolen. That was pretty much it. And we have had the suspect, he is being charged. He confessed to them. And the last I have is March 21st at 12:20 a.m. Trooper Bowen was conducting a patrol check in the same Twin Ridge Development. And he observed two suspicious subjects walking on private property. Although they weren't stealing from vehicles at this point, they did have controlled dangerous substances on them and drug paraphernalia. And both suspects, both suspects were placed under arrest and charged accordingly. So if you see a lot of us in the Twin Ridge Development, that's the reason, just because of the ongoing thefts. Don't be alarmed or anything. We're just out there making our presence known. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mounary Volunteer Fire Company report.
I'll start with our incident report. We had a total of 137 rescue calls. Eighty in Carroll, 53 in Frederick, two in Howard and two in Montgomery. We had a total of 28 fire calls for the month. Eleven in Carroll, 13 in Frederick, four in Howard and none in Montgomery for a total of 165 responses. And also, the third Sunday of this month will be our last big country breakfast until next year. So we'll be putting those aside for the, uh, summer months. I wanted to share a few things with the council of some challenges that the fire companies currently facing. I know we're gonna be starting in the budget season. And I just wanted to make you aware of a few things. First off, let me say I have to do some rumor control. We have not sold the carnival grounds. Contrary to some rumors that are circulating in town, we still have it. The contract with May is still in force. The ball fields are being used. We have become a combination department. So we're no longer just a volunteer department. We have paid personnel. That has affected us in a number of ways. It's allowed us to provide 24/7, 365 guaranteed response, um, because the number of volunteers and activities of volunteers are dwindling, which we all face with that. But that has a financial burden that it places on the fire company. As an example, our workman's compensation insurance premium that we have to pay. Over the last two years, it has gone up 57 percent. Two years ago, we were paying $47,000 a year for that insurance. This year, we are paying 82, over the, we are up to $82,000 for insurance. So that is quite an increase. It's a result of the fact that they're now calculating the fire service differently and the fact that all of our volunteer members are covered, even those that are not active response, but we're all covered the same way. So we're faced with, you know, $82,000 of insurance that two years ago, we were only paying $47,000. The other thing that's happened is that the budget for this year that we get from Carroll County has been cut for us by about $23,000. And they have completely removed all of our recruitment and retention funding. So any money that we have to help us recruit more volunteers, to maintain our volunteers, has been removed from our budget along with some other areas. So that's an additional burden on the fire company. But the most significant burden we've had to face is that when we made the decision this year to go to 24/7 coverage, we didn't have a 7:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. shift of paid personnel. We've added that. We've increased our salary to be competitive. And it's been the fire company's position that we feel that the salary money for paid personnel should come from all of our external sources of funds. So the money we get from the town, the money we get from ambulance billing, the money the county gives us. That money, for many years, has been sufficient to cover our salaries. When we decided to add this additional shift along with the pay raises, we now went $40,000 in the hole. So right now, we have volunteers going out and engaging in fundraising activities to make salary to pay the paid personnel. Now let me put that in perspective. What does that mean for the fire company? Our carnival, our net on our carnival is approximately $100,000. That means 40 percent of the money we take in in that week carnival, we're gonna put towards payroll so that we can guarantee 24/7, 365 coverage of an ambulance crew, one ambulance crew, for the people that we serve in the area. So I wanted to give you that information and to make you aware of how important to us fundraising now becomes. And it becomes an additional burden that we have to place on the volunteers even more so in order to make up that salary difference. So when we're doing fundraising, one of the things we have to do is make sure people attend our fundraisers. And one of the ways we do that is through advertising. And as you know, about a year or so ago, our sign up at the carnival grounds was vandalized. We replaced that sign with an electronic sign, hopefully, so that we could better advertise our, our activities and also to let you see the time and temperature, which a lot of people have enjoyed. Well, apparently, we have a, there's a problem with our sign. And so I have a copy of a letter from the town dated March 12th, sent to the president of the fire company, and I'll read it. It says, "RE Code Violation." Dear Mr. Walters, please be advised that the message board at the fire grounds on Route 27 is not in compliance with Section 112-11-B6 of the town code, which states that periodic changes in messages are allowed. However, board shall not have flashing, blinking, fading, or moving messages of any type. Messages shall be limited to items pertaining to the business on the premises or public service notices. On Friday, March 8th, between 3:36 p.m. and 3:38 p.m., the sign was observed displaying messages that, while pertaining to the business on the premises or public service notices, the formatting of the changes did not comply with the conditions set forth in the code. Specifically, each change to the time and temperature was accompanied by a flashing format and each message utilized a scrolling-moving format. Upon receipt of this letter, kindly make the necessary adjustments to the sign's programming that will bring its operation back into compliance with the code. If you have any questions or wish to discuss the matter, et cetera, et cetera." And that was, uh, sent to us from Monica. Again, we're trying to raise funds to provide for your protection. And now our sign is in jeopardy. We have made some modifications to the sign. We no longer have it flashing the temperature. We, it just comes up. We tried to shorten the messages as much as possible. And we have the messages changed slower and they just scroll. So technically, we're still in violation, but the fire company is going to continue to use the sign as much as possible because we need that as one of our ways to, again, encourage people to participate in our fundraising activities so that we can take care of these financial burdens that we're faced with. Thank you.
Hey, Bruce, thanks for bringing that to our attention. I'm sure the, the mayor will be looking into that.
Yeah, yeah, we just have to make sure that we follow the processes. There is an approval process for the sign. And if you would like to alter that, that process or with the stipulations, I would encourage you to bring that back to planning and ask to have it revisited. But at this time, aside from the safety factor of being a distraction, there's also a code issue. So please bring that back to planning if you'd like to and bring your proposal to them and let's see what they say. Thank you. Uh, if I could though, in regards to financing, Charlene, as we went through the budget process and back and forth, back and forth, there was some good news for the fire department in the budget, I believe?
It's the same as usual, 10 percent of what we think we're gonna get.
Well, there's no cuts. But I thought there was actually an additional funding source coming through.
Oh, okay. That came from the MML, um, some extra money available possibly this year. And I did make contact with the fire company and give them that information. It's something that would be totally separate from us, the town. They would go, um, for that, um, on their own.
Good. And you did reach out to them.
Yes.
It is very important to keep you funded and thank you for all you do for the community.
All right. Now we have a, a small window called the Community Concern Citizen Comments. If there's anybody here that has a specific item that they want to address the council on, this is your chance to come up and, and tell us what it is and tell us about it.
Well, I'm here because I'm very concerned about the synthetic cannabis that is being sold in Mounary. It may be Frederick County side, it may be Howard County side, it may be Carroll County side. I don't know what side. I just know it's at the Exxon here in Mounary. And, uh...
Uh, just so I, the one down 27?
Yes.
Okay. That is outside of, that's outside of town, so we have no jurisdiction there.
Okay.
I do appreciate you letting us know.
Would like the community to know because it's, it's in this area too. Even though it's sold there, and I'm, I know that for a fact, it's right here under, everywhere. Anyways, it's very dangerous. The hospitals are being overrun. The police department are being called. Kids are dying. Kids are going crazy. The mental wards are full. And it's serious, okay? They're making huge money on it. Frederick County side, they banned it. Frederick City, not the county, that I'm aware of. And I'm trying to get all the communities together, all the counties to ban together. I already called David Brinkley. I've, you know, bent the meetings in downtown Frederick and they banned it because the smoke shops are selling it, tobacco shacks, gas stations, Exons. I will write a letter to the Exxon and let the corporation know. I'll be out front there if I find out the guy lied to me about the police coming in there and telling him he can't sell it anymore with a sign on my back handing every parent or everybody, "Don't buy your gas." Okay? I've had it. It's affecting families. It's causing violence. It, it's horrible. It's worse than meth and crack and heroin, okay? Kids are having kidney failure. If you go on the website, Safe, it's on Facebook, it's Synthetic Awareness for Emily. You can check it all out. You can read the comments that it's affecting all these people. Frederick has got a high amount of spice kids, okay? And it's, it's in every school. Lincolnor High School had one boy that was there lifted out of there having seizures. It's unbelievable. And the community and the parents and you kids need to listen. Don't touch it. It will kill you. And if it doesn't kill you, it, it will make you crazy and you'll be in a, a mental hospital.
Ma'am, just for the record, can you give your name and where you're from?
Yeah, I'm from Mounary. My name is Patricia Wayland. I deal with it personally. I know a lot of kids that are using it. I see what it does. The symptoms are vomiting, seizures, hallucinations, sweating, um, anger, violence. Kids have been known to take off all their clothes and run down the street. They've found them dead. It's one try for some. Others can use it and it's, they're marketing it to elementary school kids. It's got Dopey on the front of it and Scooby-Doo, okay? It's not high school. They're targeting the elementary. Okay? Your high school students not watching Scooby-Doo or Dopey, the Seven Dwarfs, okay? It comes under lots of different names and it's a real problem. And parents and everybody, schools need to band together and, and help ban it. It's here forever now. It's like anything else, but we need to ban.
You speak of banning together and I applaud you for coming forward. Do you have an email address or somewhere where people, can you read it into the, the record so people could contact you that have similar concerns?
Sure.
Go ahead, please.
It's Boone, B-O-O-N-E, 5326 Concord, I mean, Matt, at Comcast.net, sorry.
Comcast dot... And I think part of this is not the first time we've heard this at the table. And part of the problem is that the, the manufacturers of this synthetic drug, what they do is once they ban it or once alleged...
Take it another chemical.
They put another chemical in it, it changes the name, it changes what's allowed. And that's, so it's kind of a moving target. It's been a problem in the state and thank you, but it starts with awareness and you're doing that tonight.
The awareness, but it also, I mean, you can legislate something that will cover all those areas. I mean, you know, when you go into the gas station, it's an underground thing. You go up to the counter and you ask for, you know, Scooby-Doo snack or spice or JWH or K2 or Couscous or whatever the many names it comes with, okay? They're still, you know...
That Exxon has an interesting position because I'm not even sure whose jurisdiction they're in because that's right where the four county, I mean, they're not...
It is right where the four county is.
Right, they're out of our jurisdiction.
It's Frederick County.
That's it? Because Montgomery shoots right across at that point.
Well, because there's kids that go to Lincolnor High School. But I'm just trying to bring awareness, try to get something on the books because I know in some states, they have been successful. There is a way. There's gotta be a way. I mean, you know, it's, it's costing families a fortune with psych and hospital visits. And you can talk to any police officer that has dealt with this. It is a lot worse than marijuana could ever be.
Yeah, one of the problems they've had in Frederick City is the guys just move outside the line. We really need a state, which is, I'm glad you contacted Senator Brinkley because we really need a, a state law. Because, you know, for example, our, our reach doesn't even go to that Exxon station.
I know that.
That's not in town, so we're, you know...
I know that. But if parents and families band together, we can run them out too. I mean, you know, I mean, there's nothing that says that I can't, we can't go down there and boycott them either.
Definitely.
You know, and get ahold of Exxon and let them know. Let Safeway know, not to exclude them, you know? I mean, let's do it. Let's get it together. We've got young people that we're counting on to run our country. And I don't want that, you know? I mean, it's, it's awful.
Well, you have four legislators here tonight that have heard you, so...
Okay, well, thank you. But there's a lot. If you go on the website, Safe, you'll, you'll read a lot.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, I don't see a rush to the podium. Sometimes there is. Let's move into ordinance's resolutions. We're showing ordinance 2011, given how far behind we are on this. That's seven. Ethics ordinance update. I don't really think there is any update. I don't see Dick here.
No, Dick actually sent an email and said he wasn't planning on coming. But the email he sent us just for notices that he wanted to able and wait on the state legislature.
Stupid's gonna happen.
On the email, yeah.
Yeah.
And their commission meets on 5/9.
All right. 2013, um, tax rate. This is just here for, um, introduction. Uh, I will so introduce. And we should be sitting a public hearing date. What's our, I know we...
Six of May.
Keep forgetting it's April. It's hard for me to, it's hard for me to grasp that. I haven't seen any leaves on the trees yet. They were snowing last week. Debbie, let me suggest, we're gonna have a couple of, um... Budget workshops. We're gonna, we're gonna plan, set those later. I, I see you, you want to tell me something there?
I'm concerned by what I have every year.
Okay.
I need to get that ad in the newspaper. And we, we are exempt from state requirements for advertising that were not from our own code. So I need to have all my information, a budget that the tax rate is agreeable, everybody's agreed with it, ready to go, and a budget that I can give to the public as of the 17th, 18th at the latest. Yeah, 17th would be better, um, which is only 17 days away, okay?
Okay.
Because I have to get it in and it takes about two days. One is not gonna hold the spot, so I could maybe go another day. But I have to get it in and get to the newspapers. My very last day that it has to be in is, um, that Monday of the 22nd and that's pushing it. I mean, that's in the newspaper by then.
That's for when we're gonna hold the public hearing?
That's for the ad.
Right. But we could, let's say we were to just say right now, let's do our public hearing on... Because is the May, May 7th? That's our next council meeting. Is that too late? Six is a Sunday, it looks like. Oh, no, I'm off a year. Okay. Sorry.
Okay.
Well, you know, you, you zip through these months so quickly and it's, um, okay, May 13. Six is a Monday, so we could do it that day before the next council meeting?
I'm sorry.
May 6th is the next council meeting?
Yeah.
Do you want to just set it for 7:50? Yeah, 7:15 before the next council meeting? That way, well, we, we, we should have everything wrapped up by then?
Yeah, sure.
All right. So that will be the public hearing on the budget. Correct. All right. Budget ordinance 2013 dash two. This was the nitrate station, Ben Barney. Is this your explanation?
Again? Yes. The, um, and this is not for the vessel themselves, it's just for the resin that sits inside the vessel. It's what, um, is used to remove the nitrates from the water. And that's just for water station number four where we have high nitrates. This is to replace it. We replace it after the first seven years it was in operation because eventually it gets used up and it just doesn't oper, you know... Because eventually it gets used up and it just doesn't, you know, doesn't remove the nitrate as effectively. So you have to replace the resin every so often. Now it's coming up on, I mean, I think it is already six years. It's coming up on the seventh year, but they found that it's-
It's going a little quicker than we thought. Does that mean we have a little more nitrate in our water than we probably calculated over the term?
Well, it, it actually runs longer. They, they have to backwash more frequently is what happens. So you don't necessarily have more nitrates now, but we'll get to a point where we can't just keep backwashing. We need to run the plant so-
Given this is an ordinance, if we're to pass it tonight, that would have to be done as an emergency measure?
Correct.
Okay.
Barney, good question.
I will, yeah, go ahead.
Quick question. Is there any benefit to technology advancement swapping out since we already have an emergency purchase of two vessels? We're gonna do a purchase, do we get a discount for more vessels that come with the resin new capabilities? And it makes sense to buy a third or fourth?
Yeah, again, we have two, two steel tanks that, that are used, these vessels, and we're not replacing those. Those, those are much even more costly than the resin.
Okay.
So we're just replacing the material that's inside that tank, those tanks.
No, I understood that. I was just asking, since we're already got an emergency, new business for two vessels, I didn't know. That was a question.
I would think maybe for the next cycle, we can, we can consider it. But those tanks are usually good for about thirty years.
Okay.
And so this has only been thirteen years in, in operation.
Yeah, good, good question. I will move that we accept ordinance two thousand and thirteen dash two and that we adopt it as an emergency ordinance. Do I have a second? Got a second from Bob. Any discussion? Tom, do we need, what would we need, all four votes for this to go in this count?
You need super majority of the, those elected six. You'd need unanimous vote of those present tonight.
Uh, no discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
unanimous? Two thousand and thirteen dash three, system benefit charge. Uh, this is here for introduction. I will so introduce it and we will deal with it next month. Unfinished business. Budget schedule and dates for the budget work session. See the calendar coming out? Real key for me is I have to look at my wife's calendar. So I took pictures of her calendar with my phone today before I came. She keeps a paper calendar, so I just take pictures of it. It works. So any date suggestions from anybody? Let me-
Well, it looks like according to the notes in the screen copy, we have to have it done before the nineteenth. So that it can be provided to the public. Is that accurate?
Right. I was, I'd put it on there the nineteenth. I'd like to have what, seventeenth? In there. You guys be close, I'll be happy.
So she wants it by the seventeenth. I'm just gonna, I can't speak for Chris being here, but as for me, the seventh and the fourteenth is out. So I literally have this week and the fifteenth and sixteenth. She wants by the seventeenth.
You're at the seventh, the seventh and the fourteenth, though?
Seventh and the fourteenth. I'll be out of town.
There's a pretty small window, isn't it?
Actually, easy. Me, over the time.
It's a workshop to-
So we're basically looking at fifteenth and sixteenth, right?
Or sometime this week, or you guys do it and I'm not here and Chris is here, whatever.
Well, let me ask everybody at the table, because we've all had some basic budget looking at it. I'm kinda curious as to how long we think this is gonna take, how many sessions we think we're gonna need. The budget, as I've seen it, you know, gives everybody what they asked for in their budgets. So, you know, I'm not sure that there's a whole lot of, you know, I mean, the budget as we have it holds the tax rate exactly where it was. I mean, as proposed, tax rate is exactly where it was, which actually is a reduction in taxes technically. And, you know, gave every department really what they asked for, so-
Pretty much.
You guys think we're gonna have a-
Beautification, just got one little, and there's a few additions I hope we look at. I think sanitation is just-
Yeah, so I'm wondering, you know, do, how many, do we, are we gonna need multiple days? If we're gonna, if we're gonna-
Well, are you talking, are you talking about doing this in one night? Because normally it- I mean, to go through this, I mean, you know, we've had the budget worked up like this before. And when we put it up on the screen and we start looking at the bottom line number, we start, you know, making changes here and there, so-
No.
I mean, I don't wanna go at this too ambitious.
No, I agree, but, but-
I, I mean, I think you can probably do like a parks and rec and you can probably do a sanitation and recycling in a night. And then, how, how have we done it in the past?
I don't really-
Because I know we've broken it up in the past and done different departments.
But there, there aren't the problems this year. There's no deficits.
Every other year I dealt with, we always had, we got the budget and we had negative at the bottom. And we always had to go through the budget and battle over what we were gonna cut. The budget this year does not have that red at the bottom of it. It holds taxes and it's black at the bottom.
Right.
And everybody got what they wanted. So we don't have that issue of going through and trying to argue every line. Oh, can we take a dollar out of here? Can we cut ten dollars there? That's not, we don't, we're not facing that. Now, that doesn't mean we, we don't have things we wanna change, but it's not the, you know, the real battle over dollars.
I've, I've only looked at sanitation and recycling. My focus. I, I haven't looked at-
Because I mean, if we're shooting for, one suggestion that I had when I talked to staff this morning was to have a single long session. Start maybe vitrolier, I don't know. Excuse me, how early you guys can get here? But maybe, you know, we grab food at a fast food restaurant and eat while we're sitting here discussing it. Uh, and figure, you know, maybe go four, five hours and see if we can really just knock it out.
I'm good. That's what you want to do, I'm good.
You're just looking for an excuse to get fast food, Bob, I know.
We're on diets, we don't get fast food.
I know, you're gonna go home and say, but Peter told me I have to get fast food.
You can get Subway.
I, I mean, you know, we can skip, because I mean, if we're looking at it, it's gotta be, it's gotta be done by the seventeenth. And we don't have an open night till the sixteenth or the fifteenth. That kinda does.
Unless you do it one night this week, I don't know when Chris gets back.
I think Chris is out this week. I got the impression Chris was gone this week. And then Scott's gone. So if that leaves us, you know, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, it's three days. I mean, I guess we could shoot for the fifteenth. And then if we get stuck, we can always maybe go sixteenth or seventeenth. Does that sound reasonable?
The, the most important thing that very first might is give Debbie the tax rate. That's what she needs. That's what she needs to advertise is the tax rate.
So we have more time on the budget itself? It's only the tax number?
As long as you agree on that tax rate, she can advertise.
Well, I think we can, I think we probably get enough that we can agree on the tax rate the first night.
Because once it adds goes out on the twenty seventh or whenever it goes out, then I need to have an action paper. If someone comes in, I need to hand them a budget.
Okay.
But until it actually is-
So that's all, that's all we need to advertise. That's all we would need to come up with by the end of, say, the fifteenth. Because fifteenth is arguably our secondary meeting anyways. Because if we, if we try and keep the second Monday as our targeted second meeting.
Just a minute. Are you gonna be able to do that?
I'll, I'll still take the day off and come in the night if my taxes aren't going yet.
Charlene. Get your taxes done now.
I hate doing them.
I like doing them, man. I already got my refund. I enjoy it. A little weird, I guess.
Scared me, Debbie. I thought you were pointing at me.
No, no, no.
All right. So let's do, is the fifteenth open for everybody?
Yes.
David? I better check my wife's calendar too.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, what time are you starting?
Well, let me-
Air appointment.
Okay, yeah, that's, it's good for me. My wife doesn't have anything on there, so. Tammy's got a clear night that night on the calendar. Okay, so fifteenth. What time, you guys wanna start? How, how soon can you guys get here? I mean, I'm-
Between four and five for me is, is comfortable.
Six o'clock's the earliest.
Six, is, is six good? I mean, I'll, I'll start it based on when you guys, wanna start at six? David's like-
I can, I can do six.
All right, let's do six and-
Does anybody know Chris?
Nope.
All right, if, if he can't make it at six, we'll push till later, till, as soon as Chris can make it. And let's, you know, bring our food and, you know, eat over dinner. See how much we can punch out. All right. Let's just start on that. Good. Okay, Barney, now we're back to the, okay, we got the water sta- excuse me, water station four. Is this? Isn't that, was that really just what we, what we just did?
We did the resin, we just moved vessels.
Well, see, it reads resin on here, but it means vessel on here.
The first one, I think, was the ordinance. Now you need to approve the, the purchase.
Gotcha.
Is this the same thing?
It's the same, it's the same item.
Same item.
Yeah, it's the same item. This one is just the, this is the approval of the bid that we just, I got it, okay. All right, we've got a bid here to actually purchase the product for forty-three, six, twenty-five from Sharp Water Culligan. Is this a, like a sole source or is this a bidded?
It's sort of sole source because of the warranty in the tanks.
Okay, so, all right. In other words, we got the tanks from these guys and if we use their stuff, they warrant the tax. Okay, that's the exact question. I will move that we authorize the purchase in the bid dated February twenty-second, two thousand and thirteen for forty-three, six, twenty-five. Got a second from Scott? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next up, we've got the street closing for Mayfest. May eighteenth and May nineteenth from seven AM to seven PM on the eighteenth and eight AM to six PM on the nineteenth. This is our standard yearly closing. I will move that we agree to close the street those hours. A second?
A second.
Got a second from Bob? All in favor, say, well, any discussion? It never has been as long as I remember, but all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Reallocation of funding for the grinding unit. This comes in from Brett. This is, I mean, I know what this is. This is the thing that basically strips the top off of the asphalt and makes it really bumpy. So that you can put the new asphalt, in technical terms, so you can put the new asphalt down and it won't adhere. Okay. And what happened is we had made a change previously to buy some new equipment. And there was a decision made that we were being better served by buying accessories. If I'm, if I'm right, Barney, for the tractor we already have, for the equipment we already have. And we actually have, there's a piece that we're actually trading in for this that we don't use. It's a planer or something like that.
Yeah, the sweep, the sweeper for it, I mean, it's only three thousand dollars for, for the trade-in value. I just sent a text to, to Brett to see if he really wanted to trade that in or if he would wanna hang on to that.
He says no use the sweeper.
When, when the truck sweeper breaks down, sometimes it's down for months. And this, this could be a nice backup to, for those times to have.
Okay.
My thought is, I would think he would wanna hang on to that, but his, his response was if he can get the planer and hang on to the sweeper, he'd be glad to-
He'd do that.
He'd be glad to have it.
Does that change our dollar here?
It would change that dollar, it would add that twenty-nine, sixty-three back into it. So it'd be the eighteen, eight, nineteen, eighty-eight. But like you said, they, they've hardly used it to date. They've, they've had it for a year.
Yeah, we've, yeah, the sweeper's been pretty much unused, but the, I can understand the need for the, the grinding unit.
It's also risk management if you hear about the sweeper, it's like a snow blower.
You're gonna need it.
You're gonna need it when you don't have it.
Well, I, I will say that the street sweeper, I think it was last summer, we needed a new, or maybe it was two summers ago because Mark was still here. I think it was the fuel pump went in it. And it took us like months to get a new fuel pump for that thing. Because they just weren't making them and the thing was down for like the summer.
It's, it's old. I mean, our streets are for sure.
See, I mean, when we bought it, it didn't seem that long ago, I guess.
Notice I was silent.
Yeah, thanks, Bob. So if we were to let them keep both, it would be eighteen, eight, nineteen, eighty-eight. And this is actually just a line on shift. We actually have money in the budget to purchase, what was it, something else? What was the other?
It was a tractor.
Okay.
And then part of that tractor was relocated for another accessory type item.
Right, we're gonna buy the tractor and we didn't buy the tractor, but we took some of the money to buy the, that's right, to buy the mower for what we already had.
Right.
And we wanna use the rest of that money to buy this.
Yes.
So it's not an increase in the budget at all. It's just a, what we've decided is a more effective use of our equipment dollars. That's really all it is. So does the council need to vote both the change and the contract or just the contract? Because it's already our money. I mean, it's already in there.
In this kind of thing, since the, the amount is, is already approved, it's just the department's responsibility to tell the council that they're not spending the money the way originally appropriated.
Although we did already get told that.
Right. So this is just an extension of that first one.
Okay.
There doesn't need to be a vote. It's not a budget amendment.
Okay, we do need to vote on the quote, though.
Yes, you need to vote on the purchase.
I, I will move that we go with the eighteen, eight, nineteen, eighty-eight. Scott's idea that we, we keep that sweeper just as a backup in case our sweeper goes down. Because I know it has in the last few years. So I'll move we approve the purchase of the eighteen, eight, nineteen, eighty-eight from Bobcat as outlined here. Any discuss, any seconds? Second from Bob? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is unanimous? All right, we're under reports.
Mr. Mayor. Okay, I'm pleased to, I'm pleased to present the first draft of the two thousand and fourteen Town of Mount Airy budget. There is a long executive summary that I've laid at the front of the table, the press, public. There certainly can grab a copy of that. Charlene also did an excellent detailed breakdown of every category shift, every change, along with graphs and charts. Charlene just did a wonderful job. I think it'll, the town council will appreciate it as they go through this process. Our financial picture is strong. Our operating budget had a surplus in FY two thousand and twelve. Our reserves have increased. Services have been maintained. We are moving forward with capital projects and only using reserves for those capital projects designated for such use. With the proposed tax rates, our citizens will see a reduction in their municipal taxes. I look forward to working together throughout the budget approval process to present the citizens of Mount Airy with the most efficient and effective budget possible. Staff reorganization. I've reached out to the council members. As you know, we've reorganized our field staff to provide better service. We've established a new position of Director of Public Works. This change will give us centralized leaderships in all our field departments. Brian Johnson, who has displayed leadership and excellent service and dedication to the town of Mount Airy, will be promoted to this new position. We are proud of all of our dedicated staff and look forward to providing the community the best possible service. Maryland Municipal League, this is just a quick update. A lot of times we see emails going across our desks. Bob and I have attended a few meetings together. I've been there with Scott as well. Citizens have heard us talk about conventions, evening dinner meetings and support in general. As a reminder as to why we should support the Maryland Municipal League and attend MML functions, here are just a few of the many projects they performed on our behalf. They've lobbied hard to restore the highway user fee and police grants to municipalities. As a result, we may actually see a fifty percent restoration this year, which amounts close to three hundred thousand dollars for the town of Mount Airy. They are also seeking a gas tax exemption on fuels used to power town vehicles. And they are seeking to lower our advert, our required advertising cost. The league provides a compensation analysis that allows us to compare our employee costs to that of other municipalities. In general, they help small municipalities such as ours have a voice in issues that affect us on state and federal levels. Town events, Mount Airy's famous chili cook-off will be this Saturday, April twentieth, from ten to five. In addition, Bob, I'm sure we'll touch on this, but the Mount Airy Arts Council will be there as well, featuring crafts, musicians, local artists. The event will be held inside Town Hall located in the center of Main Street. Also, council member Bob King and I will be hosting a town table with info- Also, Councilmember Bob King and I will be hosting a town table with information about your government, opportunities, and services. All council members are invited to join us. Gems of Mount Airy. Mount Airy is a gem for many reasons. We are one of the few municipalities on a superior groundwater system. We're close to several larger municipal hubs, but have retained our small-town charm. Through careful planning and limits, we will be able to maintain this great community we call home. We are also home to some very unique businesses that I plan to highlight each month. This month's gem is the Mount Airy Duckpin Lanes, which has been owned and operated by Joe and Kate Ranier for over thirty years. Talk about small-town charm. This somewhat hidden gem offers all the modern convenience, is a computerized scorekeeping in a down-home, family-friendly setting. They offer full food service and beer. They are located at the end of Center Street, right off of our historical downtown Main Street. Whether it's for leagues, birthday parties, or just at special date night, you'd be glad you visited this Mount Airy gem. You can contact them at three oh one, eight two nine, oh seven one oh. The mayor's community forums will actually only be held on April twentieth this month at a table out front with Councilmember King and whoever chooses to join us, so I'll be there most of the day. Volunteer opportunities still exist. I do want to reach out. We have three openings on our water commission. This volunteer commission is made up of Mount Airy residents who study and advise the mayor and town council on all issues related to water, cost structure, conservations, and capacities. Please let us know if anyone is interested in serving. That concludes my report and I do have a recommendation. I am recommending Pete Madeira for Streets and Roads. In addition, I am reappointing, it's a good thing you're here tonight, Tony. I'm reappointing Tony Fletta to the Planning Commission. And, yeah, and Roxanne Hepville to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
I will move we accept those nominations. Do I have a second? Scott spoke up, he was quicker than you, Bob.
Sorry, I was a pen.
That's what I did.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
Thank you.
I had one quick question. Now that Brian has been promoted to, I guess, Department of Public Works, are we going to be looking for a new individual to take his place in the water department? Or is he going to be double-hatted doing, doing, doing what, I mean, being the supervisor of water and, you know, I guess my question is, is he going to be double-hatted?
For a while he is. We're actually down two employees right now, so we're going to fill in two employees. Brian knew that when he accepted the position, that he would be very much a working supervisor, so if you use the term double-hatted, yep, for a little while he will be and we're going to see how it works out.
All right, sanitation, recycling.
Sanitation, recycling, and I got a whole bunch of other stuff, too. Preliminary budget numbers have been submitted. Our new recycling brochure that I've been talking about. We've put money in next year's budget to have the brochure sent to every household that gets a water bill. It's going to require putting it in an envelope. I talked to the commission. We also would like to offer the opportunity to the rest of the commission to maybe do some kind of a newsletter. Maybe slip inside that envelope about what's happening in planning and zoning, you know, what's going on in parks and wrecks. You know, a couple of paragraphs, just get something out there since we're putting stuff in an envelope anyways.
Now, is it, we're going to take the water bills and stick them all in an envelope?
No.
Okay, it's going to go out separate.
This will go out separate.
All right, well, I guess you get about, I guess you get about four pages. I think it's about four pages you can get before the postage kicks off.
Right.
It's a great idea.
So, you know, there'll be more details on that later, but the Mount Airy Arts Council has volunteered to help put this newsletter together. So, we'll have that.
Melissa's working on something like that in conjunction with.
Coordinate with Melissa.
Okay.
Yeah, she is working on a newsletter and she's also, we've been playing with the idea of a Facebook page, but we're not there yet, so.
Okay, good.
We'll pummel together with her and see what her plans are.
Okay. We had discussed lowering the maximum number of gallons from a hundred and twenty gallons to ninety gallons of pickup. And I think, Peter, you were talking about the size of the container for recycling. In Frederick County, we only get picked up for recycling every other week. We had Anne Marie Kramer in here and she's kind of the director of recycling in Frederick County. There's a ninety-five gallon container available at no charge. All we have to do is call them and tell them we want one.
We can swap our smaller one for a bigger recycling container.
Swap them out for a bigger one if that is becoming a problem. Also, for a small one-time fee, they will bring you another sixty-five gallon one, so you can do one of two things, have two sixty-five gallons or a ninety-five gallon. Ninety-five gallons is a lot. She says, she says it's only about two inches bigger square, five and a half inches taller than the current. And I don't see how you can get a third more in something.
Yeah, I don't.
But she swears that's the way it is. But I have, I have her number. Three oh one, six hundred, twenty-nine, sixty, or recycle at Frederick County, Maryland dot gov, and they'll bring them out to you. Greasy pizza boxes go in the trash can, not the recycling bin. And our next meeting will be Wednesday, May the fifteenth. Yeah, Wednesday, May the fifteenth. I'm thinking April the fifteenth. May the fifteenth at seven o'clock in Town Hall. At the EDC meeting the other night, we were, we were lucky to have a fellow by the name of John Wheatman, who's the administrator for Carroll County Economic Development Commission. There are many, many programs that, that help small businesses and startup businesses in Carroll County. And he was thinking maybe scheduling something one day to come down here and kind of run a seminar or something and, you know, kind of discuss. Because it's hard for business owners to leave to go seek help, so he was thinking maybe bring the help to them.
Yeah, he runs a big outreach program for the Carroll County Economic Development Office and he's great.
He is, he is awesome.
Did John, I remember John now, did he end up following through Rob at all? They had all heard.
He was working with.
Commissioner Rothschild.
Yeah, Commissioner Rothschild. I haven't talked to Rob Selchak.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
And also, EDC has some budget money left over, so they were going to, they were investigating having W F M D ninety-nine point nine do some advertising for the chili cook-off and actually spend four hours out here in the, in the town broadcasting from Main Street during the chili cook-off. So that's something that EDC was working on in support of MAMSA.
Good idea.
What were they going to do again? I'm sorry.
Broadcast live from the chili cook-off.
Who was going to broadcast?
Radio station.
W F M D ninety-nine point nine.
We'll do that, that'd be great.
I was busy shooting you an email about the toders.
And as Pat mentioned, the Arts Council will have their very first art show here in this building in piggyback with the chili cook-off. I think it's nine to three or ten to three, Pat?
The chili cook-off is nine to five.
Okay, and I think they were.
That's my report. That's ten to five.
Okay, and so they were, the Arts Council was ten to three, I think they were going to go. But there'll be demonstrations on carving and there'll be photography and painted art and there will be music. So it's going to be a lot of the arts. And I just wanted to tell you that their mission statement, the Mount Airy Arts Council is a grassroots organization working to bring the arts into the hearts and homes of the people of Mount Airy and beyond. And that concludes, well, one more thing in my report. I went to a Frederick County Board of County Commissioners Municipalities meeting several days ago. I lose track of the days here. And they refund us, they refund us tax money where double services are paid.
Tax equity.
And it's a tax equity program. So we will be getting a refund of four hundred and eighty thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars from them. It's up twenty-three percent from last year.
That's a huge increase.
Yeah, all good budget news this year across the board. If I could, on that Arts Council, they will also be leaving some of their art for display for a few weeks.
Right, I think they were talking thirty days.
Something like that, so we'll discuss that. Just let town council know that we'll have local artists' work available in the hall for at least thirty days and we'll revert back.
All right. That's it, Bob?
That's it, I'm done.
David, Parks, Rec, Beautification.
Yep, Beautification meeting. We had a general overview of the health of all the parks. We identified several items that we're going to be asking town staff to take a look at. I've already sent an email off, I sent an email off to Brett and then he's forwarded it over to Brian for him to take action on. And as a commission, we have a very strong volunteer base actually on the commission, but if there are individuals who are interested in coming out and helping beautify the town and maybe they don't want to actually sit on the commission, they can still volunteer. So I would encourage anybody who would like to be a volunteer to help out with some of the work, to, you know, contact Town Hall and get ahold of Mary Hushour, who is the chairman of the commission. And she can, you know, you know, point you in the right direction as to dates that things will be done. Under Parks and Rec, I actually got a email about scooters in the skate park. And we discussed that as a commission and that, along with BMX bikes, really destroys our skate light very, very bad. So basically, I'm just giving everybody a heads up, scooters are not allowed in the skate park. It's basically skates and skateboards. The Calvary Assembly Church will be putting on a family picnic at Summit Ridge on the eighth of June from eleven to three PM. This is basically the second version of it and I think they may actually be coming to Streets and Roads to inquire about doing some sort of like parade or some, it's almost like a hayride-type parade. They want to go through Summit Ridge to kind of basically advertise up that they're having this event up at the Summit Ridge ballparks. And then I wanted to let everybody know that on May eighteenth, we're going to be having the Mutt Run again. This is going to be the second annual Mutt Run. And basically, all proceeds go to taking care of the dog park in Watkins Park. And that is my report.
All right, thanks. Planning Commission, EDC.
Okay, so EDC, Bob, thank you for being there and taking that. For the Planning Commission, the meeting was canceled. There was a notice sent out of cancellation of this meeting and then it was rescheduled.
That was slow, right?
Yes. It has been rescheduled for this Wednesday, seven PM. It's going to be held at the Fireman's Activity Building, which is ten oh eight Twin Arch Road, for those who need to know where it is. The sole agenda item for the Planning Commission meeting is going to be a community discussion forum on the proposed commercial and retail development associated with the special exception for the PANK property. This is only a discussion. There is going to be no recommendation made on the special exception during this. It's just for people to talk and hear what's going on. And then the chair will call the meeting at order at eight o'clock when more structured information exchange will take place. So that's P and Z. As far as Water and Sewer Commission, I'll just do it now because I'm talking. Chris asked me to read the following statement, which came from the Water and Sewer Commission, Dick specifically. Wednesday, the Water and Sewer Commission will consider an alternative approach to FOG. FOG stands for Fats, Oils, and Grease Control. The Water and Sewer previously discussed creating a comprehensive ordinance. The alternative approach consists of town employees monitoring the fog levels in the sewer system. When a problem is detected and documented, the State of Maryland Health Department is notified. The state visits the food service establishments to do inspections of best management practices and determine if the FSEs is in full compliance with the state requirements. Town staff would accompany the state inspector. The state will take enforcement actions and levy fines when business food establishments fail to comply. And that was basically all they wanted to read for that report.
All right. Okay, Streets and Roads.
Yeah, I was just going to say on the grease, if I could, we've had issues in town where we've had major backups that have actually caused some damage to some businesses and we feel that this will help us going forward to reduce the grease in our lines and.
And we've had other businesses damaged by upstream grease from other places.
Exactly. And it's difficult sometimes because you may have five or six businesses dumping into one.
Where's it coming from?
You don't know where it's coming from, so we need to do something in Mount Airy and this is the effort. Well, generally, there's a grease trap in all commercial businesses, but it's very easy to bypass that grease trap. Not saying anybody does that, but I've heard of it happening.
All right.
Grease hits our dreams.
Streets and Roads, we had a very good meeting last Thursday, well-attended by citizens. We are looking at the master plan currently that's been passed over to us from planning. What we finished at the last meeting was we took the master plan map, which shows basically the major arterial connections that were in the last master plan. And we reviewed them all to decide whether or not they should be shifted, kept the same, or maybe even deleted altogether. We did finish that map, so that'll probably be coming into planning. We, I think we kind of, I think we pulled one, we changed one a little. And then one that affects something you guys are, which is on PANK. We recommended that that interconnection not be made to dump that traffic out through the Conestoga neighborhoods on the ridge, because that's, I mean, that's a steep hill, it's got a wind around at the top. It's just not, in our opinion, good for any type of major traffic flow. If that property's to be developed, our perspective would be it needs to be running out of there through some other route than through those neighborhoods. But that's ready. Our next meeting will be April twenty-fifth in this room at seven thirty. We will be discussing the written part of the, you know, basically the, you know, the goals and agendas of the overall transportation sections. That's what we'll be covering next month. That would be it for Streets and Roads.
Bob tried to get his pen out, but he couldn't get it.
I just wanted to ask one question of Scott. The meeting on Wednesday night is going to be an informal meetings from seven to eight and then at eight o'clock, they'll call the meeting to order and it'll be a formal meeting?
That's what I understand. That was the message that was sent to all of us from Heather, including the press.
Okay.
Okay, good. Monica, you're up.
We have two new employees here at Town Hall. Katie Moore, who is our new receptionist downstairs, she's a good girl.
No, on this floor.
On this floor, I'm sorry, on the main floor. She's our main receptionist.
That stairs is down.
Yeah, she's doing really well. And then also Barney's junior engineer, Rachel Gootie is her last name, and she's also our site inspector. And she's just started this week, so she's.
We go by the title besides junior engineer. That just sounds to me like a little kid who wears a cap, you know, and hangs out by the train station.
She takes her duties very seriously.
How about assistant? She does. I mean, I've met Rachel. She seems very good, but I don't know, junior engineer, how about assistant engineer or something like that, just?
We can change it if you want.
Yeah, I mean, to me, junior engineer sounds, just doesn't sound right.
And the other thing, I sent an email out to everybody earlier today is that we did have some vandalism at one of our sewer stations at the End Original Boulevard and the pumps were shut off for a period of time. That happened sometime on Saturday night, so we did have some leakage occur and Brian is handling that and he contacted MDE and also the County Health Department. So he's going to file a full incident report to us, to me.
All right. Tom?
Just on the Verizon lease, that is going to be finalized hopefully this week for the mayor's signature. You all have already proved it. There is one wrinkle that I do want to call your attention to. Last few days, there were three contingencies or preconditions that Verizon needed to provide. For instance, relative to structural engineering, signage they would have up and things of that sort. You've met all of them except for one. They needed to get an easement across the Wagner property for access. What they've decided to do instead is that they will procure an easement for the town to provide us with access to the water tower and our permittees, including Verizon or BGE or other future users. At any rate, the point is, is that that easement form we got on Thursday, I've been out, so I still, we still have to take a look at that. But I'll probably be back to you in May with an easement to, hopefully for the council to vote to accept. I think it's a win-win situation from the town's perspective. On the Watkins Building matter, our submission has been made to the judge. It was made on March the eleventh, I believe. The other side's submission is due very soon, sometime this coming week, I think. I have met with the staff and then also preliminarily the Planning Commission on, at the request of staff, to begin to put together a very rough ordinance for ultimately your review on water allocation issues as per the several, the discussions that we've had in the last couple of meetings. And that's essentially it, other than I do want to discuss two things. And that's essentially it, other than, I, I do want to discuss two things in closed session.
We have a closed meeting set at the end. All right, we have the Code Enforcement Officer's report. Is there any other business? Okay, we'll move that the bills be paid. Do I have a second? Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I will move that we go into closed session to discuss, we, we pulled the employment one off, right? Okay, so it's going to be, to consider the acquisition of real property for a public purpose and matters directly related thereto, and to consult with council to obtain mutual advice. I've made the motion. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. King. Halt is aye. Blaze?
Aye.
Everidge is absent. King?
Aye.
Strong?
Aye.
All right, we will re-adjourn in closed session in about five minutes. Sound good?
Perfect.
Oh, I was gonna say, as soon as we clean the room.